I'd like to call this meeting ordered. Now is the time for the open forum, which is the time for any concerned citizen of Jefferson, to speak to their council on any item that is not on the agenda.
My name is Bill Adler. I live in South Chestnut. I'm also the president of the Congregate Meals. I'm here to talk a little bit about what's planning for Congregate Meals out there. One-third of our citizens in Green County are seniors. The average social security income of a senior in Iowa is $11,000 a year. That's less than $1,000 a month. There's a process going on right now to change the Greenwood Center into a golf course, pro shop and bar, and to take off where the eating area is for Congregate Meals for an event center. When we were first approached about this at Congregate Meals, nothing was said about making the food area where we serve the food into an event center. We serve between 80 and 100 meals a day. There's four routes here in Jefferson. One route that goes to Grand Junction and also services Rippey. There's one route that goes to Sherdan, and there's one route that goes to Scranton. Our Congregate Meals serves those people to make sure they're alive, they're okay, and it's probably the only hot meal a lot of them get on a daily basis. We do appreciate the money that the city and the county gives us each year to help fund it, because what the federal government gives us is not enough to feed all the people. And I would say about half of the people we serve can't afford to give us anything. So my concern is, is the cost of the city to move all of that, rearrange it, and I don't think we'll have enough seating space in the apartment that they're thinking about demolishing and putting it into an eating area for our seniors. There's some times there'll be 10 or 15 people there, then there's other times there'll be 30 or 40 people there to eat. And I have a concern of us taking that whole top half and changing it around. It's just, you know, I'm a senior. I think it's real important that we take care of our seniors. They've given a lot back to this community over the years, and I'm really concerned about spending this money to change something that's been going on for over 40 years in this city and county. And the service that we give to our citizens, I just hope it doesn't go away. We had a deal with Greenwood, Inc., that we would be there forever. Our concern is where are we going to be if the city decides that, no, they don't want us to do that anymore? And that's all I have to say. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Oh, when I first heard about this too, I thought that, this is Meals on Wheels too, right?
Right.
I thought that was staying there. I mean, that's what I was...
It's supposed to stay there, but they're going to take the eating area where we have right now, and that's going to be an event center for the city to rent out.
Sure.
And they want to take the person that's in the apartment that's right next to it, and have them move out of there, reconstruct that, and make that an eating area. It's a one-bedroom apartment.
When you say "they," is it the city or is it the Greenwood, Inc. that...
It's the city and the Greenwood, Inc. together. And I was told, we had a meeting with the city and with Greenwood, Inc., and it was the first time I heard about them taking that away.
So, has there been meetings about that, or...
Yet the update on that project is that there's been one kickoff meeting for the feasibility study done with Bolton and Make. So, at this meeting then, Greenwood was there, Congregate Meals were there, city representative, golf course employees were there, and it was just again the kickoff for this feasibility. So, as you think about that, then you think about Congregate Meals specifically, that has just always been part of the deal, that Congregate Meals needs to stay at that location. And it just has never been questioned at all, Congregate Meals would stay at that location. Okay? What the upstairs may look like of that building and is there any reconstruction, you know, those are questions to be addressed during the feasibility study. So, you know, we do have professional help here lined up to provide options on that. Yeah?
My concern is that there will be not enough space to serve the people that come in to eat on-site. That's my biggest concern. And then the reconstruction of the kitchen. All the equipment in the kitchen belongs to Congregate Meals, and we have to keep that secure. And then we need storage for the food and everything else, because we have deliveries that last for about two weeks. And we have to have a lot of storage area for all the food that we need to serve those people over the next two weeks. So, I want to voice my opinion, and I want to make sure that you understand that. And I know we'll have more meetings, but I heard that it was going to be on the board today, so I thought I'd better come out and talk. Any other questions?
My initial impression from just having conversations with people is that there would be, there would be no perceived negative impact on Congregate Meals, and perhaps it'd be even an improved space, and with still, I think, plenty of space. I mean, is that your impression of this?
I'm questioning the amount of space.
And is it 30 folks is kind of your biggest groups?
What?
30 people is kind of your large end of groups?
A couple times a year, we'll have up to 50 or 60.
Because I feel that would be sort of a similar space to what's at the top.
But you need, you need kitchen space.
That's not going away. That's not...
I'm sorry, that's not going away. That's huge.
Lois, there's all...
It would fit in an apartment.
Lois, all of that is being, that secure kitchen is not being touched. Yeah.
Well, the kitchen will have to be touched, because you have to change how we serve the meals out there.
All this will be addressed, for sure. Yeah, I mean, that's all a very important part of this, and that's like one of the fundamental things that isn't going to be negatively impacted. I mean, and that's why we have people looking at all the different options. I hope you're a part of the discussion. You'll be asked to be.
Well, I think, Bill, that you should be, since you're president, you need to be part of this.
I am trying to be part of it. That's why I'm here.
Okay. Well, just, and just not here, I mean, when...
Yeah, in the, in the meetings of the, you know, whatever, the entities.
I was at that first meeting.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I would say, but that's been the only meeting.
It's in its infancy right now, so nothing has been decided, one way or another.
I've got to see the plans. I'm concerned how those plans are going to work out, because they really were talking about making an event center. And how many event centers do we have in this, in this town? Do we need another one?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be beneficial for those of you that are making the decisions to go out and watch them prepare a meal, and watch the number of people come in, and see the space required? I mean, we...
I think we're asking people to be at that table, yes. And that's why we're hiring professionals, to not be a part of that.
No, I'm not saying table. I'm saying to...
Maybe that is figure of speech. Right. To be a part of the discussion, watch what happens, understand that that's why we're bringing professionals in to analyze all those things.
I'm sure that Bolton Make will take that into consideration of the size required, the size needed, and the storage required, and the storage needed.
Yep.
Is one of our committees, is that what's involved with this?
The Golf Course Committee is, so that's Matt.
I think the intent is that this is a mutually beneficial situation for everyone. No one feels slighted in any way, either side. That's the goal, and that's why we're trying to do it a professional way, and bring in people who deal with these situations, you know, so...
Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Frazier. I grew up in Scranton. Moved here about nine years ago, out to Greenwood. We love it out there. We've got a good cook there. She makes things I don't like, but I still eat it. But what I'm worried about is the parking we're going to have out there when this all happens. And the question to the councilman is, since you bought the golf course, has it made you any money? Or is it, you should add a horse?
Well, there's a lot of things in the city that don't make money, but they're entities for people that want to live here and enjoy their life here.
Just convenience for the golfers, in other words.
If you're not a golfer, you probably do feel that way. I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah. But that, but the parking is a good concern to be addressed, absolutely.
It is a major concern.
It definitely is. We all agree. We all agree. We, folks, we're all thinking about all these things as well. Absolutely.
Okay.
It is that when I talk with, with folks and update them on the study, first of all, the thing that I always want to tell people is it truly is a feasibility study, and it's putting cost to everything, and knowing ultimately whether this truly may be a feasible thing to do or not, because the answer may very well be that it's not feasible. You know, that certainly is, is the option. But when people talk with me about concerns, there's two things that I always stress the most, that are most often brought up as concerns. Knowing that Congregate Meals would always have their site available, and that parking is always brought up as the second major concern. So, I just know a lot of people are on those very, very same pages.
Well, like I say, we've been there nine years, and we just love it there. Best thing we did was come to Jefferson.
Great. Good.
And the wife has had a stroke two years ago, and it's hard for her to get around. So, we want to kind of keep it, so she can go places. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're glad you guys are here to ask your questions and voice your concerns, so thank you for that.
How long will the study be done?
90 days.
Right, and we wait on these discussions till we get the study, and instead of having...
All these things are what the study is to address, to look at them. So, all these things will be taken into consideration and looked at. That's why it's happening.
Yeah, once the study is done, you people will have, besides having your input into the study, now we'll have a chance to give your input at a meeting on the study of what you feel about it. Again, they said 90 days is when the study will be done, so we're looking July?
July, August. I did that earlier, yep.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent items. We're to approve.
Second.
Aaron Holt.
Hi.
Jackson.
Hi.
Sloan.
Hi.
Wechert.
Hi.
Simone.
Under due business, item A is set a public, date for a public hearing on a proposed 24-25 budget amendment.
This would set a public hearing for the, on a proposed budget amendment for the next council meeting on May 27th. Just a real quick recap, I asked Sarah for probably the three biggest things that are involved with this. On the revenue side, it has to do with reevaluation and some lost revenue out of that casino reevaluation, but additional revenue from additional interest-bearing accounts. The biggest thing by far is, is SRF and sewer projects, and timing on that, and how it was shown in the original budget versus how the actual timing came to be. Then on the expense side of things, will be some City Hall tech and some tech support that was needed there, and some upgrades, and capital projects as it pertained to that last bond issuance, and that was the East Lincoln Way project, and the timing on that as well then, primarily again about the SRF timing. But, so that would, would be, the action tonight is to set public hearing for the 27th.
Simone.
Second.
Simone.
Hi.
Wechert.
Hi.
Sloan.
Hi.
Jackson.
Hi.
Aaron Holt.
Hi.
Item B is resolution setting public date for a public hearing on the designation of expanded Jefferson urban renewal area and on the urban renewal plan amendment.
Yeah, so there's a couple things that are on the council agenda for action tonight pertaining to urban renewal plan. And I would like to take a few minutes and I want to walk through this information with everybody about that. And so I had handed out these, these little packets, or if you had your full packet, it starts, this is page, page 7, 8, 9, about those, the maps. But, so what we will be proposing to do, and we want to keep these things separate in as far as how we're talking with them, we would amend the urban renewal area, which is our existing urban renewal area, and then there'll also be the creation of a new blight urban renewal area around the middle school location. But that, that is separate, and we'll, we'll not think about that right now. This is, all has to do with the amendment of the urban renewal area. So, looking, just first of all, looking at the map, when you see the yellow and the pink, those are areas where we could, can, they're, they're in our urban renewal areas right now, so you can, you're able to spend funds there. What we would need to do is to add the middle school site. This would add the middle school site and the next block to the south, including the old south grade school block, and that would be to the urban renewal area. You'll also see a thick black line there on Lincoln Way and, excuse me, on Highway 4. So, highway, and the right-of-way of Highway 4 would be included there, just that the sites need to be contiguous. So, as you look at the, at the next page then, and you'll see the one entitled East Lincoln Way Urban Renewal Area. So, this would be a proposal to add some additional properties to an urban renewal area on the east side of town. And really, this, it's a relatively large area there, but it's done for two reasons. So, the, we will pitch a program to you about an economic development program for enhancements to the buildings on the east entryway again. So, that would be one thing, is a building improvement project over there financed by TIF. The other reason why the area is so large deals with drainage. And, and we'll talk through a proposed project about drainage there that may help the area from the, from the fairgrounds and then all of the area to the north. Everything from the north and basically everything to the east of Cedar Street drains up to the north into that, into drainage ditch to the north. So, maybe some additional work there. Third map, in this case, it's an aerial photo, is entitled Greenwood or the Greenwood and Golf Course, so this would include Greenwood and the golf course in the urban renewal area too. So that as we look at this Greenwood project, that could have the opportunity then to expend TIF dollars there for, for the Greenwood project if need be. So, you see the area to be included is basically Greenwood Drive and everything to the south of that, and then includes the parking lot and then the existing clubhouse and some areas around that. So, the area is outlined in the black sharpie. Everything outlined in the black sharpie would be included. So, as you flip to the next page, the second half of this urban renewal update then, so you'd have the urban renewal area or the map updates, and then whenever you look at any projects, the projects all have to be, to be put into an urban renewal plan. And it would tell you that we work with our, with our bond council to get these updates done and make sure that they're all done proper, but of course, it costs, costs money to utilize those legal services. So, it would tell you when we look at doing this, we're going to have a comprehensive, a comprehensive urban renewal plan update that includes many potential projects. So, just talking through this, we'll talk about the $300,000 forgivable loan to the middle school housing project, and then you also see a little bit of legal fees there, so it would be $500. Okay, then item number two. I guess for those of you, you may want to look at this. I just have some recap stuff in there instead of all other specifics. Maybe let's follow that one instead, Jack. So, that, that document that I just handed out to you is just a recap, a pretty easy-to-read recap of what the proposed projects are, instead of having all of the legal documents to go through. So, again, number one was that forgivable loan for the middle school. Number two would be to create a commercial revitalization program for East Lincoln Way. So, again, this, this idea there would be that this is for businesses that front onto East Lincoln Way. Opportunity to improve that, that eastern entryway. The amount of assistance, this program would be modeled after the program downtown, but not quite so, so aggressive. You know, when you, when you do any of those buildings downtown, you have all of the historic requirements and everything that would go along with that, which we don't in, out in the East Lincoln Way area. So, this would propose that maximum assistance to any business out there would be $75,000, and maximum of $200,000 aggregate in any one fiscal year. Item three talks about, again, East Lincoln Way area and potentially acquiring two derelict homes out there. So, again, just some urban renewal out there on East Lincoln Way. Then item four talks about, about the storm drainage improvements. So, there'd be, it'd be cleaning, improving, potentially reconstructing some storm drainage out there in the area that serves some of the fairgrounds and areas to the south and east.
Do you want us to save questions till we're all through with all of it, or...
Now's as good a time as any.
All right. I saw that the softball area is included in that one, you know, black outline. Could this, could this be anything where we can divest ourselves of it and have the school acquire it, like we've talked about before? Could that be part of any of this?
Not directly as part of this plan. What I will tell you is that we, we have some further discussions ongoing with the school to be able to work a deal with them on that. So, it's...
I'd say at this time, that concession stand is a blight.
Okay.
And so are the restrooms out there.
I see.
And a lot of that other stuff. So, I mean, in my dream, it'd be for us to get rid of it and give it to the, to the school district, and I think they want it too, but...
Sure. Like I said, things, we do have some interaction with them on that, on that very thing. Again, drainage, so that drainage at the fairgrounds, that does actually drain to the south and to the east of there. And then when you get north of, of Lincoln Way and then east of Cedar, that all drains to the north up to that, up to that drainage ditch. So, this would allow some flexibility in being able to use TIF dollars to, to fund large or small projects there. Item five does refer to the Greenwood Center, and so this would have funding to acquire or remodel the Greenwood Center, repurposing that as a golf course clubhouse, public meeting space, and then future improvements to the golf course that would be needed to accommodate that, including grading, significant grading work, golf cart paths, parking improvements. See the, the number that was estimated there? And again, this, the study's not done, so we don't have any numbers on this, but they're put into the project, into this program in the project list to get them included, and they would always have maximum not to exceed dollars amount. So, that's why it says a million dollars there. And number six, acquisition and development of public parking lot. So, this is downtown, so to speak, but it's, if you're at the middle school project, it's directly across the street to the east. And there's those properties over there that are owned by Alliant Energy. And this would have the city be able to utilize TIF dollars to either acquire that or turn that into a parking lot area. And I do have, have a lot more information for folks on that, as far as that property and the, the environmental condition of the property, which is actually surprisingly good, and would have very minimal environmental considerations if we look at that.
When we're talking about the city acquiring these things, it's that we're setting aside a program, right, that someone else can use this, like in the forgivable loans and things like that? Or are you saying we're going to acquire those parking lots and that?
In this case, this would propose, I think, public parking lot.
Okay.
That, that the, the city would be the entity to acquire that, that property and install a parking lot.
Wouldn't this more be parking lot for whoever lives in the middle school?
It's part of it, certainly.
Why does the city need to do a parking lot for somebody who's going to have a $10 million housing deal? There's no business around there.
Without a doubt, Jack, it certainly is going to be utilized by, by some of those folks. I can, can agree with that. But it's also utilized as public parking lot, which is, is another need that's often expressed around the area, is for us having further parking.
Well, I guess...
But why does the city need to acquire this for an apartment place to help them out and do everything for them? Nobody's going to park there to go to the post office and go up on the square. I just feel you're building it for this apartment place, and, I mean, that's why you're doing it.
It certainly will be used that way. It'd be part of the use, that's, I'm sure that's true.
I originally understood this was, those parking spots aren't going to be paved, right? They're going to be left the way they are at first?
Really, up in the air as far as what that actually might look like, so I'm sure...
And I don't know if the city should have them either, but certainly, it can't be paved and then marked off Apartment 1A, Apartment 1, you know what I mean? What you're saying too, what, you know...
Well, what happens when you're, you know, who's going to clear it then? Is the city going to clear the park, the snow?
Yeah, we have, we do those issues, but yeah.
Kind of the developer's issue. It's not the city's problem to, you know, it's not the city's problem to put parking in for them.
Because originally, it was going to be just minimal to get, you know, it away from, you know, whatever, which is fine.
You also think ahead, thinking that there's potential green space coming to there down the line, at least in conversation.
Certainly.
So, some other public use area there that we would want a public lot for, for events going on there, and a park use and whatever that might be.
Which is actually then, when you, when you look at item number seven, that talks about this development of city park lands, and this would be area again around the, around the middle school building. And if, if you refer to the three-block project, as that project that had been talked about about years ago, the concept would be very similar to that. Again, this is not saying that these things all happen. What this is doing is laying the groundwork to have a financing mechanism that if, if things proceed, then it could. Then number eight and nine, I would tell you, I would very much like to see these, these things happen, that as, as property taxes and the ability to, to fund, general fund expenses continues to constrain, we'd, we'd look to fund some, some operations with, with different revenue sources, including TIF. So, this would, would say $100,000 annually for five years, for five years, to fund administrative activities associated with the economic development areas, so that largely is salaries, and then up to $120,000 annually to fund economic development organizations, and that's Jefferson Matters and GCDC. We fund those entities already, this would just be having some allowance to fund them in a different manner, from them using TIF dollars.
Not to, you know, like you said, this parking thing is maybe what it is or what it isn't, but I guess the reverse of that. If that green space is done, and they're having a festival or a music thing, and I'm, I live in those middle school apartments, and I drive home after work, and now, oh, I have no place to park. I guess that would annoy me too. I would hope that maybe, you know, once that all gets going, that middle school apartments, that they acquire them, and then they make them their, their thing.
There'll be plenty of parking when the... There'll be plenty of parking when the gym comes down in five years. Plenty of parking.
And then that, the green spaces can't happen until then either.
Yep. So as you flip to the next page in the packet, then flip your mind a little bit to now thinking about this urban renewal area anymore. This is something completely new. This would be a new district that would be based on blight, and this is an aerial photo of that, such that in the upper left-hand corner, underneath the word redevelopment, it is the middle school picture, middle school. And then everything included in, again, outlined in black sharpie, would be proposed to be included in a blight area. So it's the next block to the south excluding the children's center, and then it's much of the blocks to the right then to, so that it includes those lots owned by Alliant and does also include the Elks Club then, and the next half block to the south. So again, the idea about blight is that based upon the current conditions, we could find this blight finding, which allows you to utilize tax increment financing in the area. Okay? But having said that, what we're really doing here is looking at tax increment financing. But again, there is a second incentive to the middle school project, and that's 10 years of tax abatement. Tax abatement and TIF do not work well together, so what you're doing is laying the groundwork for, to be able to utilize TIF in year 11. So it has very limited impact in the short term as far as what TIF would be. Having said that, you do need to have projects identified. So if you flip the page again, you'd look at these projects, which could conceivably be funded by TIF from the blight area. They're the same ones that we had, many of the same ones that were on the previous list. Middle school project, public parking lot, city parklands. See that they're all, and they're all for the same amount. That does not mean that they're double dipping, that they'd be twice that amount. It would be being able to utilize revenue from either source to create that total. And again, funding administration and economic development organizations.
Where do, you know, we have, you know, we're projecting out to 2026 and 2027 on certain things.
Yep.
Where does this all fall into our projections?
On, like our capital improvements plan?
Right, yeah.
The use of the TIF or knowing that those TIF dollars there is consistent with what we would figure, we would spend those TIF dollars. Fact of the matter is, we never considered drainage or parking lot or funding a downtown park. You know, that, those things are not included in our capital improvements plan.
Is what we're being asked tonight, is that to...
Set a public hearing.
Kind of approve all five of these things that are in?
Tonight, while you're doing the setting of public hearing.
Okay, got it.
So what I would ask the council tonight is that you go ahead and set a public hearing. The public hearing is actually two meetings from now on, June 10th. There's some procedure that needs to happen between now and the public hearing, and main thing is consultation session with the other government entities and a planning and zoning meeting.
So you're basically voting on the funding source?
Yeah.
Potential funding source.
I mean, really what we're doing is laying the groundwork to have this available as a funding source.
But some of these, I think what you're asking is some of these components we'll vote on separately at a different time.
Yeah.
When it comes out, like the parking lot?
Certainly.
That'll come up for a separate vote at a separate time.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and we're not approving any parts.
Absolutely. That's what I, I don't want this a big omnibus, you know, thing.
It is not.
Right.
No, it is not that.
Voting on the potential funding.
Right, yep. And again, the action for tonight is setting public hearing dates.
Okay.
For June 10th.
For June 10th.
June 10th, yep.
I move to set that date.
Second. Oh, sorry, Pat.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
No.
Wietrak?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
I got a question on this. Now, this has money wrote up here going to Jefferson Matters twice. Can he vote on that since he is involved so much with Jefferson Main Street Matters?
Yeah, we've had Councilor Wietrak have voted on budget matters with them.
Yeah.
I was just asking. I have abstained on things as well, and it's not double dipping, he just said that.
Okay, I was just asking.
Yep.
Thank you.
So what you just did was set public hearing date for the urban renewal portion of that. This next one that the mayor will introduce is to set a public hearing date about the blight, TIF district.
Item C is resolution setting a date for public hearing and designation of 2025 Jefferson Redevelopment Urban Renewal Area and on Urban Renewal Plan and Project.
Also June 10.
Same time, June 10?
June 10, yep.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Like, it's good to have public hearings. Aye. Oh, sorry, you're oxymoron.
Semalek?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
No.
Wietrak?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item D is resolution setting date for public hearing on the disposition of a vacated alley in Block 34, original town of Jefferson, Green County, Iowa.
You sure can.
All right. So I spoke with the attorney that is working with the development group that is acquiring the middle school, and he looked at the abstract for the middle school lot. It's Block 34. And, I mean, this goes all the way back to when the middle school was built there. You know, you would assume that everything is proper and correct. Well, if you actually look on that redevelopment area, on that blight plan, if you look where the middle school is located, there's a vacated north and south alley on, you know, running right through the middle of that. It's never been used as an alley, and it's always had the school on there. But they can't find any record where the north half of that vacated alley was ever truly conveyed to the school like it should have been. And it's very possible that it was in some document, they just can't find it at the courthouse. So what the city's being asked to do is convey that out to make sure the title is correct, and that's all the city's being asked to do. So you run across these kinds of things every once in a while. It's just kind of funny that it was at the school. Sorry. What the council's being asked to do is just set a public hearing for that, and that would be on the 27th, 27th of May.
So who owns the alley then?
Well, we think that the school does, but we can't find any record that the school actually took title to that. There, all the other parts of this, you know, are clearly there. It's just that the north half of that alley, if there was some deed, you know, they just can't find it at the courthouse. So right now, the city would be the predecessor in interest, and so the city's being asked to just kick that out because the city has no interest in wanting one half of the alley underneath the middle school. So that's pretty much all that is.
So does this mean the city walks away, has no part of the alley, won't have to hammer it out and put green in there?
You're exactly right.
Move to approve.
So we're setting a public hearing.
Yeah, instead of public hearing.
Or move to, yeah, approve of a public hearing.
Yeah. We look at May 27.
We got it.
May 27, yep. Jackson?
Aye.
No, who said the second?
Sorry.
Okay, Jackson said aye. Sloan?
Aye.
Wietrak?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item E is resolution approving Amendment Three to Grant Agreement between the Iowa Economic Development Authority and the City of Jefferson.
Yeah, maybe you could have Chris come speak to that, Mayor, and give a little update on where he's at with everything.
Evening. The amendment before us, this was the last extension, the last funding source needing to be extended for the project, the downtown housing grant. I've been working closely with the individuals at the state to get this extended. This is funding that goes all the way back to COVID-related funding sources, and so there's federal requirements in terms of timing, and so the state has allowed us to extend this. This is what's creating some very strict deadlines for the project that we are so far on pace with achieving. So this, we need to approve at a city level since the downtown housing grant, like many of these state grants, goes to the city and then gets turned, and in turn is set up with an agreement with the developer. This one adjusts the dates per the conversations with the state, so starting in June, finishing in June of next year. And, yeah, we've been working through all of this with the team to align with it. So happy to give, answer any other questions about it. The project is going along as anticipated, like we thought. The last couple months have been very busy, this month as well. Pricing is being put together right now, so the end of this week is when we'll get the bids back. That's kind of the next big milestone with this whole effort, so fingers crossed in that regard. And then we keep stepping through things, one task at a time. I will add some maybe clarity to some of the questions previously. The TIF that's being created, that blight TIF, the second one that Scott was discussing, so that's a totally new TIF structure. The nice thing, if I understood it right, is that is a TIF that exists in perpetuity because it is blight. I'm looking for a head nod from, yep. And so that's unique in the world of TIF, but that also creates a use, an economic use for the property tax that is going to be created by the school project and allows that to be used in an economic structure, economic incentives going forward in perpetuity. So a unique kind of approach that Scott found as a way to blend in and create some opportunities ways down the road because of the project. And then the previous amendment that adds the school building to the downtown housing grant, the question of parking still very much has to get worked out. So there is no, there's no answer yet. We're still working with the current owners of the, the current owner of those lots is Alliant and trying to figure out a way that we can at least get them into possession here of, whether it's city or someone here in the community, so those can be lots that are utilized in some way, shape, or form rather than just being vacant lots. We don't know yet. So more to come on that. That comes a couple steps down the road in terms of the big picture with the project. And that, like I think Pat pointed out, the TIF, the public hearing is not voting on that specific project. That is just one of many projects listed because those structures have to list potential projects to get that approved. Open to any questions? Well, I'll close with a thank you again. I appreciate the partnership with the city and bringing projects together.
I got a question. Is there any contract that the gym has to go down and then in five years, they won't find any other reason to keep it up? Because that would get rid of your parking issue.
The gym is going to be, is going to stay as school property, and it is up to the school how that gym is utilized. The project cannot require anything of the school, other than that the gym stays there for a minimum of five years, and that's how we are amending things with the school.
Then what happens after five years? Can you rebuild the gym or do you have to pay to tear it down?
That would be up to the school board. We cannot tell them what does or doesn't happen. They cannot take it down for at least five years after substantial completion.
So speculate in five years what's going to happen to it.
Up to the school board. I'm not, I can't say that.
At that point, do you own it then?
Nope. It is still school board property. They are, they agree that they will not destroy that gym for five years because the historic significance of the school building as a whole, that gym ties into it. And so that would put the historic tax credits associated with the school rehabilitation at risk, potentially a risk of recapture. And so the school board is, will discuss tomorrow for an amendment to the purchase agreement that says just that, that for five years, they agree that it will not be torn down. But at that, it's still a school property and we cannot tell them what to do. I know the school has historically been proactive in not having dilapidated structures sticking around, but again, that's, that is ultimately their decision.
And you still think you're on price at 8.5 million or do you expect it to be substantially higher on your project?
We will find out in about a week.
Coltrane?
I don't know if you know this, Chris, and I just can't wait to go to the school board meeting to ask them. Can the school sell it to another entity, group, person, organization within those five years, or are they not allowed to do that? Do you know that?
I don't know for sure. My impression, and this would need to be, if there is a group that would be interested in it, my belief is that as long as they agree to maintain that gym for that window, then there could be a third party that would acquire and utilize it. Again, that's, there's an assumption in there, but I believe that's how it would work.
Okay, thanks.
So will the school end up putting a fence around it to keep your liability and their liability down?
I don't believe that there would need to be a fence, but we, if there is a concern, we'll work through that with the school. The school has been, just like the city, the school's been wonderful to work with. They understand the importance of the project, they want to see the project happen, and so they've been a wonderful partner. And so certainly, if there's concerns with liability, we'll work through that to make sure everybody's in a good spot.
Chris, what's the property line sell? Sorry, Andy, if you have a question?
You want me to, I can repeat it.
The property line?
Between the school and gym. Yeah. So the question was, what's the property line between the school and gym? We just replatted that at a previous meeting, and so the property line is now 15 feet off of the school building, the original school building, and that line stops roughly one and a half to two feet before you get into the gym, and then runs through that connecting
I know, as this is yo-yoed, you know, you were told first that the gym had to go and then, oh no, it can't go, that the school board, I remember distinctly, said that they would still tear that down. But to Chad's question, five years, that could be a whole new administration, a whole new members of the school board? I guess you just can't, you wouldn't be able to tell.
Or no. And we can't, right? And that's just part of the process is that you can't predetermine a demolition of historic property. And so that's, we are very much hands-off in how that's handled.
When does the, when does the five years kick in?
Substantial completion, so certificate of occupancy.
Could, I mean, I guess this is a question for the school board. I don't know if or why they might do this, but could they, you know, try and tie themselves to tearing it down in five years? Could they vote on that? I mean, and that probably wouldn't be binding anyway. And you can't legally ask them to do that, right?
I cannot. We are actually removing that. The current purchase agreement has that, and we're purposely removing that. That is a piece that we have learned through this whole thing, so I don't know the answer to that.
It's basically school property, so whatever they decide, they decide.
Yeah, and we're comfortable having adjoining property. We're working through all of that, all the requirements with that. So like I said, it's been a great process. This is not an easy process to go through, especially in this situation, but appreciate having a city council and a school board who are very much on board with making what we think is going to be a great project, a very unique and important project for the community to come together. So thank you again.
Thank you, Chris. I move to approve the amendment.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
No.
Wietrak?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Item F is resolution approving of facade rehabilitation grant for 219 East Lincoln
The Historical Society submitted an application for a facade grant to do some repairs to the front of the building at the museum. The windows were getting bad and the trim around there had gotten rotten, getting some water damage and some structural damage around the windows, so they submitted to the city. The downtown building committee reviewed the application, did recommend the improvement of this facade grant.
Chad, you said this was the museum?
Yep, it's the museum.
I thought they did something just recently.
They did something with the original CDBG, whenever that was, 10-plus years ago, but, yeah, it had some considerable water damage and some rot around the windows. Any questions about anything? I think...
How old are these windows?
Was it... I...
I mean, it was just shoddy workmanship, that's why it failed?
It should have lasted longer, yes.
Have they contracted with anyone yet, or...
Yeah, they have, there's an estimate, yeah, for the work. It's in your packet.
Do you know if it's someone different than the first time?
I do know. I do, and I do know the contractor, and I would, I would trust that he was doing a good job, too.
And it is someone different than?
Yeah.
Do they do, excuse me, do they do warranties or that, or work with someone? I know when we built our house, you know, the windows are 10 years. I mean, do these contractors not... I mean, do these contractors not do that when they do that work?
There, there may be a.
Hey, Chad, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, so she's wondering about warranty on the work. There, there could be. I'm not familiar with who did the project. And I don't know about the warranties on the, on the windows at the museum.
That would be, that would be, that would be up to the building owner to have the warranties and stuff, not the city.
Okay, even though we funded, we don't require that the warranty be stated.
So that wasn't a, I, I think that was a, was that a state, state grant at the time?
It's a state grant.
State grant, yeah. It wasn't a city, city grant at the time. And what, do you, I don't know, what, do you know what year that was, Greg, when they did this? I don't remember.
It was within a couple of years after they opened down there. And I don't know how long it's been, it's been.
Gosh, it seems sooner.
20 years, right? Or something. It's been, it's been a long time.
Yeah. I think it was when they did the, around the facade grants, the original one around the square, whatever that. It's probably as long ago than what we think it was.
I think we figured it was about 20 years, so.
Yeah, could have been, yeah.
I wouldn't see any warranty issues on 20.
Yeah, and there wouldn't be anything under warranty for that long.
I move to approve.
Second.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Item G is resolution authorizing submission of application for the Iowa Department of Transportation Airport funding and certifying the eligibility requirements.
Right, so we had, at the previous, previous meeting, we applied to the two federal programs which, which would largely fund the Fuel Farm project. This would be a supplemental grant that we would seek through the state. And really what this would do is, is to minimize the amount of local assistance that we would, would put towards the project. This one is specifically for removing the existing fuel setup and, and then repaving part of that apron. But, but again, so that would offset part of those and reduces the amount of, of local match and we, this is very competitive. We may or may not get it, but we should certainly apply.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
You want to wait?
Get that burner mic in so you can vote.
Jackson.
Aye.
Item H is resolution approving a 28E agreement with the City of Dana.
Yeah, so these are those agreements in regards to recycling. Again, we had dissolved the, the Green County Recycling Agency and then the city would have individual 28E agreements with, with the individual cities. So we will have one action here with the City of Dana and one with Rippey. We had previously done Peyton. We're waiting for Sherdan. And they had considered it and had a, had a question about curbside recycling at their last one, so we have not received that back, but, but yet forthcoming. So two actions tonight, one would be Dana and one would be Rippey.
Move to approve.
Second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sumalik.
Item I is resolution approving a 28E agreement with the City of Rippey.
I move to approve.
Second.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item J is consider approval passment number 27 to Shank Constructors Incorporated for $803,897.71 for the wastewater treatment plants project.
Yes, so this is for work completed through the month of April. They have basically as of May 1st reached substantial completion. As part of the contract, the contractor can request reduction in retainage at the time of reaching substantial completion. So they did do that. Our staff reviewed with contractor what outstanding items we have. And by reducing, they asked for a 3% reduction from 5% to 2%. The remaining 2%, we still retain $365,432. And they reviewed the items outstanding and confirmed that that amount does cover the cost of addressing any of those items. So we did approve the retainage reduction. And then they are working through punch list items on a lot of the systems yet. They've got some programming ones. They have punch list items that are coming up daily and getting taken off daily as they work through them. We do have a progress meeting tomorrow at 1:00, I believe. And, yeah, everything's been going good. They are getting very near the end. We do still have some outstanding items that we're going to address in probably another change order, but that is yet to come. Work that was completed for this, this one included chemical feed allowance, chemical piping, digester replacement, testing and balancing of items, site concrete work, sidewalks in between, topsoil replacement, reduction in retainage. And then field order 24 and 25 were numerous time and material type items that had been worked on and gone through and discussed as, as the project predicted, is basically just a, those items were approved in the change order number eight that was approved on March 25th. So we would recommend payment of the $803,897.92. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Indian reports, Jim.
Westwood sidewalk area, we've got some preliminary ads done. So we're looking to have a kickoff meeting with city staff here towards the end of May and see where that's at and then move towards some further preliminary work and some potential or set up some times for some possible public information meetings on that one. Greenwood, as was discussed earlier, we did have the kickoff meeting and we're working on some of the preliminary elements now to start getting into that one. And then the pickleball court surfacing was completed last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Sat over the weekend, they installed the nets on Monday. It is open and being used as far as I've been told, so everything looks to be good with that. Need to verify that the lights are operational, but other than that, I think we're good. No other punch list items are outstanding, so we'll probably be looking at closing that project out here at the next, probably the June, first meeting in June to close out all that. That's all I have.
Roxanne.
No report.
David. No report.
Scott.
Excuse me, there was a library board meeting last night and just a little update on still where they're at with, with their preparations for their, their construction project. Two large things pending right now is still on the financing and the fundraising side of things, they're working to get their fundraising entity established, so that'd be a separate 501(c)(3) entity. And they would get that established and, and help with their fundraising through that. But the second thing that they did, they're going to work with, with an architect and with the intent then to reduce the scope of the project. You know, they, they have concepts out there for when they, what ended up being a $10 million project. And as they did their readiness study and their fundraising feasibility analysis, they came back about $3 million. We're sending out an RFP for, for architectural services that say, we need you to propose improvements and potential additions to the library that is at the $4 million mark. Okay? So expect, we're sending those out and taking proposals from, from architects and engineers on that. So that'll occur over the next couple of months.
Chad, do you have anything more? Mark?
I just wanted to quickly advise that Trevor Hanson will be graduating from Western Iowa Tact Academy this coming Thursday. A couple of us are going to go out and attend his graduation and he will come back to full duty on Monday. So looking forward to getting him back.
One other thing, then, Mayor, and with the chief. So as we're working through this, this city code update thing, so I'm meeting every week with, with department heads and going through sections. And so we got together today and we're talking through everything pertaining to, to police. And just my appreciation to Mark because this took good two and a half hours for us to make it through all of the police sections today. But not a whole lot of proposed changes or anything, just a lot of information shared.
Harry. No report.
Matt. Parking rec note, the pickleball courts are having their official ribbon cutting next Thursday, the 22nd at 1:30. Everyone's invited to come celebrate that going on if you'd like. The bell tower elevator has been out of commission, grounded, if you will, for a while with the part missing, and it finally made itself stateside. It was in Denver last week, so hopefully the elevator will be getting fixed here before the official open of the, of the full season on Memorial Day weekend. And then just a nod to the city works crew for all their help getting set up from market to market and the Friday evening event day are great sports with the extra help they provide. And we can do all that stuff about them, so appreciate all their help.
Sit. Chad.
No report.
Pat. Nelson. Gary.
Along with the library meeting last night, Bailey Mount, the youth director, was chosen as a fourth under 40, and she definitely is.
Cool. I have no report.